I have seven o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call attendance, please?
Councilmember Henry?
Present.
But Henry. Councilmember Mark? Councilmember Mark? Councilmember Sarah?
Present.
Councilmember McKnight?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Present, thank you. Uh, welcome everyone and thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members and we want to make sure that anyone who wants to participate and provide input can do so. This meeting is available via the city's website by clicking on the video link under upcoming meetings on the homepage at cityofcarver.com. Or you can join remotely via Zoom conferencing services and provide input. Information related to joining the Zoom conferencing services can be found on the city's website or attached the agenda for this meeting. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council, wait to be recognized by the mayor, be respectful, wait for your turn to speak, and don't speak over one another. Callers will still need to provide their names and addresses for the record. Right, uh, with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by councilmember Henry and a second by councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry?
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Sarah?
Lori Sarah.
Councilmember McKnight?
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, Courtney Johnson.
All right, uh, motion passes. Moving on to item number four, community comment for anything that is not on the agenda this evening. Um, and Brent, let's see, looking for your help, looks like there's a call in. Um, if anybody has any comments, thoughts, questions that they want to share at this point, that is not on tonight's gen- agenda now is the time to do so. All right, um, hearing none? Let's move on to presentations and reports. Deputy Purper, we, I s- first of all, am I saying your name correctly? I think you're on, oops.
Yep, I got it.
Okay. Am I say- did I say? Okay. Deputy Purper. Um, I don't know if anybody gave you a heads up that for new introductions, we like to play, uh, a game of two, two, true, truths and a lie?
Okay.
Did anybody let you give you a heads up on that?
They did not.
Okay, well, uh, you can either, uh, dive right in and tell us a little bit about yourself or give us two truths and a lie, whatever is your preference.
Uh, hi, nice to meet everyone, I'm Deputy Purper, I'll be the new, uh, Knight Carver deputy, um, to help the citizens of Carver. I come to the city of Carver with approximately four years of law enforcement experience, um, two years of prior experience at another agency of very similar size to your guys' city. Um, I'm very excited to be here, um, and I look forward to meeting more people and, um, making Carver a safe and better place to live.
Great, thank you. Glenn, did you have something to say?
I just want to welcome Dustin, City of Carver, and, um, just, um, looking forward to meeting you and, um, just, I hope you enjoy. Welcome to Carver.
Thank you.
Yeah, eh, to echo Glenn's, um, sentiments, Charlie had a lot of really, really nice things, um, to say about you, so looking forward to getting to know you and welcoming you to our community.
Likewise, I appreciate it, thanks for, uh, having me here tonight, and if anyone has any questions, be more than happy to address them, but, um, I have plenty of experience, uh, with the sheriff's office and, um, last year I was the county salt tart, um, so I helped with the city of Carver a lot, especially when Charlie was, um, out on his leave and, uh, very familiar with the city and, um, kind of, uh, things that go about, I'm, I'm very excited and looking forward to it.
Well, welcome to Carver, we're happy to have you. Anybels have any questions, comments for W. Purper?
No, I just want to say welcome, I did get to meet you, um, really briefly at the, uh, fire, the house fire that was on Ramsey Avenue in my neighborhood, so thank you for all your help and support, I know you were on scene early and I think late as well, um, helping to control all of the traffic surrounding that. Um, so I appreciate all of that, it was nice to meet you then. Welcome.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, um, thank you, Justin, appreciate it. All right, uh, moving on to item five point two, the legislative update. Representative Nash, you're not a stranger, you're not new to us, so we'll spare you from, uh, two truths and a lie, but what's going on in St. Paul?
I was thinking of several.
Oh, good, well, I mean, I'm always a fan for the games, so if you have them.
The two truths and a lie, um, I planted American flags outside of the East German Embassy. I once was gored by a bull, and of all the different culinary things that I love to eat, okra is, uh, on the list.
And one of those is a lie?
Correct.
Okay, show hands, everybody. Oh, not many people know your story about being gored by a bull, Representative Nash. Which one is the lie? Hey, Casey, if you wouldn't mind putting yourself on mute, please, thank you. Um, all right, Representative Nash, which one of those is the lie?
Uh, number three, I despise okra.
All right. Good to know, tell us about what's going on in St. Paul this year.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker, uh, Madam Speaker, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, Jim Nash, State Representative, District forty-seven A, Western Harvard County. Uh, I'm entering my fourth term in the legislature. Uh, I am, uh, the Assistant Minority Leader, and I, uh, also am the, uh, Minority Lead and Ranking Member on the State Government Finance Committee this year. Uh, we started back, um, and it, it's been a gentle start to the legislative session. Uh, I would say, uh, you have seen a great many things popping up about the state legislature and, uh, certainly the federal, uh, legislature, but what we are focusing on right now, um, from my estimate is, if you've been looking at budget numbers and you've been watching forecast numbers, you've seen that, uh, the state deficit is likely to be quite pronounced. So I am, uh, looking very closely at all the different things that people are asking to spend money on. Uh, I have asked the same question to a number of, uh, constitutional officers and department heads, uh, as they bring us their budget requests. Uh, what are you planning to do in a time of, of less money being available to curb your budgetary spending? Uh, we've had already large budget increase requests, and the reason that I'm, I'm, I'm doing that, Madam Mayor and members of the council, is because I do believe that the state has a requirement first to invest in things like infrastructure. And Madam Mayor, you and I spent many hours on the phone together, both talking to each other and, uh, talking to other legislators this last biennium, and I, I gotta tell you, I'm very disappointed with the way things turned out. Uh, for those who are watching for the first time, uh, we have tried a number of different times to get a bill into the bonding bill to fund the levy project there in the city of Carver. And I was more than disappointed with the final outcome of the bonding bill that took forever to get passed. Um, I, if you know me very well, from, uh, two truths and a lie, we still have a little work to do on, on, uh, that, I guess. But you know that I'm not much for spending, um, I, I am a, a very conservative fiscal person. Uh, but yet I was very much in favor of spending money on the levy. And my colleagues, uh, saw it differently. So, once again, if we continue to get heavy snow melts in a certain period of time, if we have a heavy rain or somebody has a heavy thaw, we could see some, some trouble. And I am going to begin working now, and, uh, Madam Mayor, I would encourage you and the council to join me in beginning to set the table for these things, but all that to recap, uh, right now, I'm, I'm asking anybody who comes before the committee and anybody who sets up a time to meet with me, to talk about their next biennial budget, to do more with less. Uh, because I know cities have, counties have, individuals in their home are currently doing so, and I don't believe that it's untoward of me to ask that state agencies do similarly. Um, we are meeting remotely like yourselves, and, uh, I, it, it is very low on the collegiality scale. Uh, so I appreciate that you guys do something that's kind of fun to break the ice a little bit, but, uh, we don't do that so well at, uh, the Capitol. But I, I hope that with the advent of the, uh, the vaccines, that we're going to see a return to St. Paul and a return to, to normal life for folks around the district and around the state. But, you know, I'm singularly focused on reducing our spending, getting people back to work, getting back to business, and, uh, trying to do funding projects that, quite honestly, are the constitutional requirement of the state of the to provide infrastructure and safety for its people, and I believe your project is one of them. Uh, so you've heard me speak these before, I'm happy to stand for questions because we often times uncover more questions than, than I do in a presentation.
Well, thank you, Representative Nash, um, we do appreciate tremendously your support, you know that, um, our conversations are interaktives, have been very narrowly focused, and that levy is absolutely at the top of my list of, um, wants and in Carver, it's more of a need. My question for you is, um, looking through your, your crystal ball, what is your anticipation in terms of a, a really small bonding bill this time around?
Well, Madam Mayor, thanks for the question, I, I think that we're going to have to first, uh, set the budget because we are required in the U- in the Minnesota Constitution to, but, balance the budget. The bonding bill is, uh, typically it's a in and off year, so we have seen for the last number of years a bonding bill every year. But I, I, my crystal ball on this one is a little cloudy, to be really honest. I, I don't know, we have a lot of work to do to get done by May. Um, I don't know if we're going to meet beyond the end of, of regular session, I, I would say that would be partly predicated on whether or not the governor relinquishes his emergency powers. Um, but if we are able to balance the, the biennial budget and might happen to beat some of the forecast expectations, there, there may be a bonding bill. Um, there will be some projects from an infrastructural perspective that would likely be on a, a, a concrete and rebar only bill, a guess, but really, to be honest with you, the council and anybody watching, it's a guess right now, I, I couldn't say definitively one way or another. The, the budget has to be done first.
Got it, yeah, and I understand that I'm putting you in a tight spot, again, acknowledging that, it's that crystal ball that you're looking into, just wanted to see what your gut was saying. Um, and when you say concrete and rebar, that doesn't sound like the ingredients for our levy, that sounds like roads and bridges, correct?
Well, I, I abbreviated it as concrete and rebar to say that we have fixed the infrastructure projects, and I would consider a levy to be one of those things. Uh, you know, if you look at, and, and Madam Mayor, I think that you probably began scrutinizing the bonding bill probably more than you've ever had, uh, because we had a couple of conversations about things that wound up into the, in the bonding bill. You know, we had public amphitheaters that, quite honestly, no one's life depends on whether or not a public amphitheater is, is built. Um, if I get one thing done in my time in the legislature, and who knows how long that'll be, I would very much like to get rid of, um, things that are of, of more, of an esoteric matter in, in bonding bills, I think bonding bills are important to the point that they are investing in things that Minnesotans depend on to live in the cities that they live in or drive on the roads that they drive on or things like that. If we can re- remove some of the, I call it fluffy bunny and unicorn stuff, if we could remove those from bonding bills, I think we'd be heading in the right direction and it would leave more room for projects like your own, so that's, that's what I need.
Got it, um, thank you, thank you for expanding on that, um, and helping to clarify. I'm also wondering, and I know that it's probably also a question, um, of others on council, but, um, curious as to what your best guess is for the future of local government aid?
Yeah, boy, we're hitting every base today, aren't we?
Sorry.
Well, no, LGA is an important thing, uh, and back to when I was both council and mayor in, in the city of, of Waconia, I have always admonished people to never plug that in as a dependable number into your budget, simply because things like this do happen, and, uh, I would not be at all surprised if, if cities do see, uh, a formula change to their LGA numbers. Um, I'm ju- that's purely prognostication at this point, but I would say that LGA is certainly an area that, uh, has or in a place where, uh, cuts are made. You know, I, I remember when I came in to city council in two thousand nine, uh, that formula was changed. When things began getting better, the formula was improved, and it's gone back and forth. Uh, I think that a historical look of LGA numbers for any city in the state of, so if it gets it, um, you'll see it go up and down quite a bit, so I, my guess is you'll see probably some, some changes to the formula. Probably not the rosiest answer you wanted, but you don't pay me to, to be, uh, to be purely optimistic, you pay me to, to be honest, and I, I think that that's probably a, a thing that you'll see is a change to the LGA formula.
Yeah, no, and I wasn't, I was asking for your gut and what your opinion was of the future, not necessarily for you to paint us the rosiest picture, so I always appreciate your honesty. Um, council, does anyone else have any questions? Council McKnight's shaking her head, Glenn's shaking his head, Lori's shaking her head. Uh, Representative Nash, maybe just one more question, I assume you're working on, um, numbers more recent than the, I think it was December first state budget forecast, which was coming out better than expected. Things have taken a turn?
Well, uh, Madam Mayor, the, the forecast was better than expected, but it's still, uh, the ultimate assessment is that there will be a deficit, so I mean, you can, you can say, hey, we got, if it's like a family budget, hey, we got an extra five thousand dollars in paycheck, but that doesn't necessarily solve a larger budgetary issue, so, um, when we get the next forecast and when we look at more, uh, months-to-month numbers, uh, as we head towards the time where we actually have to have our budget bills fixed, uh, you'll see probably a better picture. And, and that's really one of the reasons that I, I do try to, to forecast some, some caution that I represent, is that while you may have seen a quasi-promising number in the last forecast, that, that doesn't always mean anything. Um, I do believe that we are, we're going to see slight improvements, but when you consider that we went all the way through the budget surplus, uh, in a matter of months, it's going to take a while to be able to get back to the point where we're actually filling that budget back up again, let alone be at a, a zero or breakeven perspective, so um, if, if I'm wrong, great, uh, but if I'm right and we've planned accordingly, then I think we're in a better position.
Thank you. Um, council, last opportunity to ask questions. If not, um, Representative Nash, thank you for your time, I will be, I appreciate you being so proactive, um, and getting out here so early. I will be in touch and hopefully we can game plan for all things levy for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, members of council, if I could, for those, uh, watching at home, uh, if Administrator Merrick would make my contact available to, uh, folks at the end of your, uh, video feed, when you post this to the webpage as a downloadable, uh, video, uh, if that's how you handle it, uh, please do put my contact up there, I'm more than happy to field questions, take calls from folks. Um, and I'll, I'll actually just, my, my cellphone has always been published from the day I first got elected years ago. Uh, my phone number is nine five two eight zero seven six four one six. Um, please don't sign me up for any multi-level marketing, but I am happy to take your phone calls to answer questions for anybody, uh, that happens to be watching this this evening.
I'm sure you, just like the rest of us, are already getting the calls about your car's extended warranty, so, um.
About twelve a day.
I think I have three. Um, Representative Nash, thank you, appreciate it, have a good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Um, all right, item five point three, Southern Valley Alliance. Katie, Katie Schellman, am I saying your name right, Katie?
Yes, you said it right.
Okay, good. Um, why don't you tell us about Southern Valley Alliance?
Yeah, definitely, I'm gonna quickly share my screen with you, oh. That isn't working, that's okay, I can just tell you about it.
Brent looks like he's working on it, he'll.
Oh.
Okay, you should be good, I'll have you on track again.
All right, can we see this?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, so, um, my name is Katie Schellman, I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Southern Valley Alliance, we're located in Belle Plaine, Minnesota. We are a nonprofit organization that provides services, um, to victims of domestic violence. I do want to quickly give a warning about the topic that I'm going to discuss, it could be triggering a pain in our lived experience, so feel free to mute the computer or step away for a moment, um, if you need to. So we are a prevention and solu- solution-focused organization, partner with local law enforcement, county legal systems, social services, and healthcare providers to make the communities of Scott and Carver counties a better, safer place to live. Our mission is to assist victim survivors and, and domestic violence in the local community. I've been part of this wonderful organization for about six months, but Southern Valley Alliance has been serving their community for the past thirty-nine years. Maxine Kraschke founded Southern Valley Alliance for battered women in nineteen eighty-two after leaving a thirty-two-year marriage where she herself was a survivor of domestic violence. We've served over twenty-one thousand men, women, and children as they try to live a healthy, violence-free life. And last year, we changed our name to Southern Valley Alliance to reflect a more inclusive and progressive approach, as domestic abuse can affect anyone, not just women. I'm honored to be with you tonight to share about the importance of recognizing and standing up for victim survivors within our community, to share about the critical work that we are doing in your community. Did you know that one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of domestic violence or domestic abuse in their lifetime? In the state of Minnesota, alone, more than sixty-five thousand adults receive domestic violence services from programs every year. We'd like to think that it doesn't happen in our own community, but the truth is, is that domestic violence can happen anywhere. Southern Valley Alliance is the sole provider of domestic violence services in Carver and Scott counties, and we assist over fifteen hundred victim survivors every year. In Carver County alone, we provided services to two hundred and fifty-five individuals in our nineteen-twenty fiscal year. And we've assisted three hundred and ninety-eight victim survivors in the city of Carver since the organization began. Our programs and services include a twenty-four-seven confidential crisis line that is staffed by trained advocates. We have crisis intervention and advocacy that helps, um, navigate the legal and court systems for victim survivors. Safe housing partnerships, unfortunately, there is no domestic violence shelter in Scott or Carver counties. So we partner with local businesses like hotels to provide emergency shelters, or we partner with Minnesota Day One to find emergency shelter services nearby. We offer online support groups currently because of COVID-nineteen, and we'll, um, soon we will have in-person, uh, support groups once again. And once COVID is over, we will once again be offering free onsite childcare for those support groups. We have a children's visitation center which provides supervised visits for children and their non-custodial parents. And then community engagement and outreach, where I go and educate local law enforcement, legal and judicial systems, medical staff, teachers and students, social service providers, businesses and faith communities about domestic violence. Here's a quick snapshot of our nineteen-twenty fiscal year report, we were able to provide services for over fifteen hundred serv- um, victim survivors. Five hundred, over five hundred in Scott County, two hundred and fifty-five in Carver County. With nine hundred and thirteen crisis line calls answered, over five hundred volunteer hours, and a hundred and ninety-seven visits in our center. While Southern Valley Alliance assists all victims of domestic violence, it's important to highlight the prevalence and impact of dating violence on teens, especially during the month of February. Nationally, February is acknowledged as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month to help shed light on the issue of dating violence. Did you know that one in ten high school students has experienced physical violence from a dating partner just in the past year? Help us raise awareness by getting involved at www.svamn.org. Through increasing awareness, training, and building relationships, we can empower victims, educate our youth, inform our neighbors, and partner with agencies that are invested in the safety and wellbeing of our community. Again, thank you so much for your time this evening and for having me as a guest, and especially for partnering with us in ending the cycle of violence in Carver and Scott counties, we wouldn't be able to do this without you.
Katie, thank you, um, oops. Katie, thank you, um, council, do you have any questions for Katie? Go ahead, Joy.
Um, thank you for coming and presenting this information, I thought it was really beneficial, your presentation. Um, just a quick, uh, question about, um, shelters within Scott and Carver County. Are there any plans that you can speak to, I don't know if that's part of your organization's charter, or what can you tell us about any plans? I just, I see the numbers in your presentation, I went, wow, that's a lot.
It is a lot, and we would really like to have some sort of shelter come in the near future, but there are many challenges that we're currently facing, um, getting permissions, uh, financing, and, um, just some, some different issues, um, even within the counties that we had to kind of work out first. Um, so hopefully sometime soon we'll be able to do that, I don't have a whole lot of details on that specifically, but as we continue to grow, you get more information about that, I know that it will be shared out.
Thank you, that was my only question.
All right, any other questions? See Glenn shaking his head, I see Lori shaking her head, um.
Thank you, Katie, I know, um, Christie reached out to area mayors and I met with her down at your, um, facility sometime when the weather was warm, or late this summer, maybe. Um, and it was, you have a really nice setup, um, and she shared a lot of the same details that you went through tonight, so it was good to get an introduction to the organization, um, and also, um, perhaps not good to see that this is a service that's being used in our community, but good to know that it's available, um, for folks who need it, so thank you very much, appreciate you coming out in your presentation.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
All right, um, let's see, moving on, we have no public hearings this evening. Um, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda.
Motion, councilmember Henry?
I'll second.
And a second by councilmember McKnight, any further discussion? Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry?
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mark?
Um, Brent, uh, hello, everyone, and, um, Larry, I, I feel that I probably want to excuse myself from voting on anything tonight, I've been out of commission and don't feel that I have surgery and don't feel that I have, uh, put hurt myself for the meeting, so um, as long as Larry Harris doesn't have any issues with that, I would for not to be, uh, to be voting on, on issues this evening.
Unfortunately, Christie, my recommendation, Christie, would be that you excuse yourself of the meeting. Right now, you're a council member, you're participating in the meeting, I'm not telling you not to watch it, I would suggest you announce you're leaving this meeting fee and you're gonna go to Veranicus and be an observer, that way you can see everything that happens. But otherwise, you're at the meeting and you're technically present, you have to either vote or abstain or vote. Um, this is, interestingly, without naming any names, this is the second time this issue has come up in a very recent path, and that's how we resolved it, the last I was suggesting to that, that council member, watch the meeting on Veranicus, so they could be informed and see everything, but because of their condition, they wouldn't then be called. But because of their condition, they wouldn't then be called upon to vote because they're not technically.
Okay, so Larry, um, you just said that I am able to abstain. I do have comments and something coming up on the agenda, which is why I'm here.
Well, well, you're either, you're, 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 you're either at the meeting or you're not. It's a problem.
All right. Then, um, then Brent, if you want to roll call on me, we, I, Brent, I guess I will. Um, aye, Christie Mauch. Thanks, Larry.
Yep.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight?
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Merrick Johnson?
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, the consent agenda, uh, motion passes five-zero. Moving on to item number eight point one, the Timber Creek Annexation. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are reviewing an application from Summergate and Westwood. Members of both teams are here, um, for questions. If you have any, I open it up for discussion at the end of the presentation. Tonight, we are reviewing annexation for Timber Creek, which is formerly the Sun Property, a project we've been working on collectively for a while. So I generally like to say that there are many processes that we need to go through. This is another hurdle for them to cross. So Timber Creek, we previously have seen, uh, concept plan for the project, June twenty-nineteen. They recall a year ago, which is crazy, January twenty-twenty, we worked through the environmental assessment worksheet together, based on the number of units that are proposed in the project. And tonight, we are working through annexation. So upcoming still is preliminary plat, rezoning, and final plat. So tonight, we are not considering any land use decisions, um, related to prelim-, preliminary plat rezoning or final plat. It's just annexation, which is essentially pulling the property into the city of Carver. So on the screen now, our two, uh, two maps. The one on the right is the concept plan that you reviewed in June, showing the roughly three-hundred-and-fifty units proposed by Summergate with the development partner of Westwood. A mix of townhomes and single-family homes. All of that is fine and dandy, but not something we're talking about specifically tonight. Tonight is just the annexation process. So on the left, you'll see the area that is to be annexed into the city. So extending our westernly property, our westernly city border, about one-hundred-and-sixty acres to the west, adding the Timber Creek or Sun Property into the city of Carver. A little bit of detail, annexation one-on-one. So what it does, again, is that it adds additional property into the city of Carver. And this is a process that is pretty involved both with the township, so Dahlgren Township, the city, and the state of Minnesota. As part of that, the township does a thirty-day review. The state additionally does a thirty-day review, so right now, we're way between those two. Before the city can act on an annexation, the township has thirty days to review, and they compare everything against our orderly annexation agreement. So some of you might recall, or remember some recent work that we've done. We've been in an orderly annexation agreement with Dahlgren Township in two thousand and nine, which generally just sets the rules for annexation. So it has a map included that says, this is the area that we think will be in the city of Carver someday. This is how we process annexations, kind of sets the, the rulebook for annexation. So something else to think about, when a property is annexed into the city, the default zoning is agriculture. So no matter where the property comes in, when it comes in, it goes straight to ag. So rezoning is generally required each time a property comes into the city. So as part of the Timber Creek process, we'll move forward with rezoning as we consider preliminary and final plat. There's a cat in front of my screen. And annexation gives the city land use authority. So right now, we cannot make any decisions on property outside of the city, because we are not the, uh, unit of government that has authority over the property. But once the property is in the city, that gives us the ability to move forward with something like a preliminary plat resolution, rezoning, and final plat. So things that annexation does not do, we do not contemplate specifics of the project tonight. We do not consider the type of units, where it's located, how it lays out streets, any of that, and it does not approve preliminary or final plat. A little bit of an update, if people are watching at home. We're continuing to work through the preliminary plat with the development team. Um, it's a really big property, so we both are trying to be really thoughtful to get to an end product that works both for the development team, but also the city. But having it be the largest project that Carver has seen, we are cruising through plans together, hoping to move forward with preliminary plat, uh, likely to the planning commission later this winter. So again, left screen, red outline is the annexation area, right is the general council plan that we reviewed June of twenty-nineteen. So as part of your packet, there is a resolution for annexation. I'll open it up for questions. Again, Casey with Westwood is with us tonight. Corey from Summergate, oh, flip those two. Corey from Westwood, Casey from Summergate. They're both a real well-part of the development team, if you have questions.
All right, um, any questions, Council? Joy, you're on my screen, so, no, Joy's shaking her head. Uh, Glenn?
My only question was for counselor that, um, this formerly annexation falls into, um, everything that we already designed and have set up with Dahl, correct?
It does, yes.
Okay.
Lori, questions?
Yeah, I have a question, um, for the representative from Summergate, and just from, um, feedback questions I've gotten from, um, neighbors. Is, uh, Summergate the same that has Summers Creek in Lakeville?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That's it, Lori?
Yep.
Okay. Christie, giving you the opportunity? Okay.
Good, thank you, Lori.
Okay. Um, Erin, my only question is, you said that the size of this is a hundred-and-sixty-four acres. How much of that is buildable?
Um, that's a good question. We're still working through some of that with outlawed area based on the number of units, some of the ponding that we need, streets. There is, um, I'm not really sure.
There's some topography there.
Yeah, some is a, oh, a good.
Okay.
A good way to say it. Um, we are working with the project team, um, to figure out some of the areas. What was my call? So you'll see this, the dark area here is a, it's a full ravine, um, the topography. I used to think that Hawthorne Ridge was pretty, uh, hilly and had a, a large trail system. This project puts Hawthorne Ridge to shame. So the area highlighted here is largely unbuildable. There's also some areas near Dahlgren Road that get tricky with the topography, too. So off the top of my head, I don't know the exact acreage that is buildable, but a very large chunk of the site will be preserved, either in outlet for an HOA or by the city for preservation of both of trees and due to, due to pretty drastic topography.
Okay. Thank you. Um, that is it for my questions. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution one-on-five dash twenty-one approving the annexation of property in accordance with the orderly annexation agreement fourteen-twenty-eight?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor, can I make a comment first? I want, I want to go back to something Ms. Mauch said before. Um, Ms. Mauch has elected to stay in the meeting. I wanted to make sure that she stands, that she's free, she has to be called upon to vote, but she's free to abstain if she deems that's a vote. Because she's there, she has to be asked to vote, but for voters to abstain, that's also a vote, right? And I wanted to make sure that she understood that. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying, Larry.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Larry. So I believe that, uh, the motion, Glenn, um, made the motion. Joy, you're seconding the motion?
Sure, if that's, if Glenn made the motion, yes.
Yeah, I, I heard his voice right before Larry acted, so, um, we have a motion by Councilmember Henry and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry?
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight?
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Councilmember Mauch?
Councilmember Mauch abstained.
Merrick Johnson?
Uh, aye. So we have, um, a vote of four in favor and one abstention. The motion passes. All right, um, moving on to item eight point two, the downtown improvement project. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just give me a second here. Can you see that slide in front of you?
We can, yes.
So kind of before I get into the, the nitty-gritty of the project, I just wanted to kind of go over where we're at, the process, um. The council has talked about this informally at, during support session updates, um, and I just wanted to add some context before we get into the project, or if we have a project. Cause that's essentially what, uh, staff is looking to get feedback on the council, or for the council, or from the council, excuse me, tonight. Uh, so tonight, we'll review, uh, the project and the financing, kind of how we got here, um, look at designs, project constraints, so primarily that'd be with, um, the street, the curb, that kind of infrastructure that you see, um, and then agency requirements, which in this case would be primarily, uh, Carver County. Uh, we'd be looking for feedback from the council on that design, um, and then at the, at the end of the day, look to either move forward with one of the designs that you see here tonight, send all of them back for some modifications on maybe a preferred scenario, or, um, frankly, you could say, you know, we're not interested in moving forward with any of these. Uh, we have kind of the, um, all the information presented to us, uh, we don't think that it meets our original intent. We're just gonna, um, leave the condition, kind of quote-unquote, "as-is." So, um, tonight, we're really kind of asking, do we have a project? If the council would decide to move forward, that second step would involve modifications as suggested to staff from the council. Uh, we'd reach out formally to property owners and other stakeholders to notify them of an impending meeting, uh, give them a draft site plan of what we are proposing, uh, meet with them as needed, uh, get final agency review and comment, uh, which would bring us to our third step, uh, which would be, uh, plans and specifications for that, for that scenario, an opportunity for property owner and other stakeholder input. Uh, and then ending at the end of that meeting with the council considering to approve plans and specifications and advertise for the bid. There are some additional steps where you'd have to then approve the bid, uh, construction starts, but, uh, these first three steps, I think, uh, lay some, some context. So, so moving on toward the project, I'll just give some background to the council for those watching. Stop this here for a second. Uh, so the, the city council had previously asked staff to look at improvements to Broadway and Main that would facilitate a four-way stop at that intersection. Uh, the intersection currently functions as a three-way stop, uh, with southbound traffic, uh, having to ride away through the intersection. Uh, the request was due in part to the additional traffic that's anticipated, uh, related to the Jonathan Carver Parkway improvement project, as well as some safety and blockability improvements, you know, in the historic downtown. Uh, we did do some coordination with, uh, Carver County Highway, as the road primarily functions as Carver County Road forty, uh, in this section of Broadway and Main. Excuse me, uh, Carver County Highway is requiring, uh, either sidewalk bumpouts, uh, be constructed or the elimination of parking stalls to facilitate, uh, site design standards for that four-way intersection. The city does have similar bumpouts at other intersections throughout the downtown, uh, primarily Third and Broadway and Fourth and Broadway. We also took this opportunity to look at, at, I would say, a collection of miscellaneous projects, uh, throughout the downtown. And so I'll, I'll present kind of the overview of those, and then Erin Schmidt, the Assistant City Engineer, will, can, can kind of get into the nitty-gritty of those, um, as far as engineering and technical background. Uh, but you'll essentially see, uh, some scenarios of bumpout construction at the intersection of Main and Broadway, uh, including, uh, any necessary curb work and storm, storm auto work, uh, some sidewalk infill, um, Third Street West and Third Street East. Uh, in the area of Third Street West, this is specifically, there's probably about a twelve-to-in, eighteen-inch gap from the curb to the sidewalk, uh, which in retrospect, uh, if originally designed, probably should have been designed as a full sidewalk, but there was a, a gap in there for a boulevard. Yes?
Can you go back to the presentation that has a map of some of this?
Yep, I'll go, I'll, I'll go, yep, I'll go through. I'm just kind of going through most pieces.
Okay.
Of sidewalk replacement, and then final infill and overlay. On the financial end, um, the estimated project cost essentially is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which would meet the requirement to go and publicly bid the project. Uh, that includes construction and engineering costs. Uh, the city has approximately two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, uh, in unused bond proceeds from the twenty-nineteen improvement project. But we did, uh, coordinate with the city's bond council, Mary Ippe, and the city is, may use those pro-, those project proceeds on another project, or another four-twenty-nine project, uh, which the city did do a downtown project earlier in the last decade that is eligible to use those funds. So getting back to, um, Councilmember Sayer's comment, I'll bring back up the, the shared screen, so I, I can, um, walk through some of these pieces, uh, with you. So again, uh, these are the, uh, areas of the project, and then just a, an overview of the project. So this, this first section where my cursor is, uh, this is the area of Third Street West, um, so that, when that project was designed, uh, the city was very intentional about creating boulevards and not having sidewalks to curb. There is an unintended consequence there of creating that, though. There's, and I don't have it exactly, but there's essentially about a twelve, either a twelve-to-eighteen-inch space in there that's very difficult for those property owners to be paid. On its own, it would, it would be probably a difficult project, but if we're out here doing the parkhead a sidewalk contractor out, it seems to make sense. Uh, the second piece is, uh, this section of three hundred, the west, what would I call the west side of the three-hundred block of Broadway, essentially, uh, running from the end of the ice cream shop, uh, down to, um, the former Funky House, Funky Mines Building. I almost call that the Funky House Building. Uh, Funky Mines and, um, uh, Rose, Rosewood and Hips.
Lace.
Rose hips and Willow. Erin Smith, I can't see her right now, but she's probably laughing at me because I get a lot of this stuff thrown at me sometimes. And then, uh, Third Street East in this section here, uh, you'll notice there's a grouping of wood chips. Um, that sidewalk wasn't put in, kind of a cask constraint, uh, with those wood chips will get onto this, get onto the street and onto the sidewalk, uh, so an area to correct. And then these two areas of sidewalk, uh, going south to the river from Harvey's and then from, uh, the Kenny Schultz Building past Lisa's Place. Uh, there's, uh, various trip hazards along that stretch. Uh, the city used to have concrete planters that have since been removed. And then these sections also are the only remaining parts of the downtown that don't have the city's new, uh, sidewalk grid or design. The second piece gets into this, uh, bumpout design. Um, I should note, note that the yellow areas, uh, would, would be a mill and overlay, excuse me, through the intersection. I think with that, uh, Erin, I broke this, Erin Schmidt, I broke this up into four, um, scenarios, one being what you see here, and then the three additional scenarios that we discussed this afternoon. So if you, if you wouldn't mind walking through, uh, with the city council, um, your design, and then make yourself available for questions, uh, for each.
Sure. That's, that sounds good. All right, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm assuming you can hear me right now? It's fine?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, this is, um, what I'd call the base, um, you know, typical symmetrical, symmetrical configuration for a bumpout design. Um, it's, it's probably the most, uh, conservative with respect to, um, impacts due to parking stalls, um, specifically. Just for a little bit more background, so what the bumpout does essentially is it allows the, the stop sign to be placed closer to the center of the intersection. So as, um, southbound cars are traveling towards the intersection, um, they're gonna be able to see the stop sign easier, or more easily than if the stop sign was um they're going to be able to see the stop sign easier or more easily than if the stop sign was placed behind the, I'll call it what the where the existing sidewalk is, which is way off the road. Yep, in there, because of the the angle parking that we have on Broadway. So if this was parallel parking, it'd be one thing, but with the angle parking, you know, those cars can stick out considerably, you know, fifteen to twenty feet depending on, you know, the type of vehicle. So if you look, um I've labeled on this uh figure what we call the line of sight. And that's the clear view we need to maintain for the driver um traveling at what what we call the design speed, which which is twenty miles an hour in this instance. So they need um a hundred and fifteen feet to be able to identify that there's a stop sign and then decide they need to brake and then apply the brakes and slow down before the intersection. Essentially what stopping sight is. So with that in mind, um that that kind of sets the parameters for where we need to keep any obstructions clear. So they they have enough time to see it and react and brake. Any initial questions on that before I move on?
Yeah, Erin, if you could just uh discuss the orange area, the motorcycle parking, and how that is a response to the line of sight?
Sure. So with the line of sight, um being that a motorcycle sits, you know, about, you know, three to four feet off the ground, um minimum stop sign mounting height is seven feet, so we wouldn't consider that to be an obstruction um to see the stop sign. So we can't have a conventional vehicle in in the way, you know. For example, if you had a a truck with a topper on it or a van or something, that would clearly obstruct the stop sign, you know, from your view, but a s- a smaller um height motorcycle would would not do that. So we thought, you know, versus just giving it up a hundred percent and just striping it off is a loss. Um we could at least accommodate some motorcycle parking in the area, which, you know, we get on a key, so.
If we if we could just run through the scenarios for the council and circle back for questions so they can.
Sure, sure. Okay, so this is scenario two. So um, you know, Brent and I, we were looking at this stuff a little closer this afternoon and and we were thinking, you know, option one, you know, pretty typical, that was more just a concept, you know, to kind of get things out there to talk about, but we we started to really ask ourselves a question, you know, how can we really look at minimizing the the loss of parking stalls downtown, you know? So option two, what we did is we converted um the first, kind of the first stall into um compact vehicle parking, so any small, small compact car would still be able to use that spot. Um and we would lose essentially, you know, one less stall on that side. And I believe there was one more on the other side.
And Erin, can you, for the council's benefit, explain the difference between because on the west side, there's line of sight, but on the east side, there's obviously not a line of sight issue, so can you give some context and background to why motorcycle and compact parking on that side?
Sure. So on the east side, it's more of just the design of the of the bump out uh curb geometry. So you can you can really play with that. Um I wouldn't really touch, you know, going around the the corner for westbound traffic initially, but once we got through that pedestrian ramp, you know, you could you could try to tie in more quickly. It wouldn't be symmetrical to the other side of the intersection. But um, you know, to gain another stall, you know, it might be worth it, so. Um definitely have some flexibility on the back end, and that's what prompted scenario three. Um as you see in scenario three there, we tied down on the east side of the intersection more quickly. Um obviously, it doesn't look symmetrical, right, um to the west side, which is a little more conventional, but for it to gain that extra stall, it might be worth it, so. And functionally, it really doesn't do a whole lot. Um doesn't really, you know, function. Now, this is what I'd call the extreme option. This is option four. And this one, it doesn't really touch anything on the east side of the intersection. It maintains the existing curb line. Um, you know, plus or minus. We do some pedestrian ramp improvements in that quadrant, but what you see what happens there is you go to an angled pedestrian crossing and um the length of that crossing is much uh longer than than a bump out. So that's that is another point to a bump out that that should be noted is a bump out, it does two things. It improves sightlines in the intersection, but it also um improves pedestrian movement in the intersection because it reduces the the length of the crossing. So pedestrians have um less distance across in it when and then as a result, you know, it's improves the time or less time to get across and then increase efficiency at the intersection. But that's kind of how we progress through, you know, from what I call, um, you know, basic bump out design to much more unique and minimalistic approach. So. Any questions?
Erin, I have a question. It looks like according to my math, in scenarios two and three, we're still gonna lose two parking spots on the west side of Broadway. And then
Yes.
just one in scenario three. Am I squinting and getting close enough and counting correctly?
In scenario two and three, I have noted on the west side of the intersection, we'd be losing um two parking stalls permanently. And and one of them additionally would be converted to compact car owner. So two permanent impacts on the west side. In scenarios two and three. And then on the east side, um there'd be one one permanent impact as shown.
Okay, and then on the west side, sub, I'm sorry, the west side, with that sightline, we can only do one compact. We can't squeeze two compact spaces in there.
That's actually a really good point. I think we probably could, looking at optimizing that west side in scenario two there, that next stall, you know, we could look at that distance, we might be able to squeeze in one more compact car stall there instead of in a motorcycle period.
Okay.
So, good, real good point.
Hey, Johnson, I have a number of questions if you're if I'm able to go now.
Yep, go ahead, Christy.
Um, other parts of the project I'm gonna start with, um when we're looking at Third Street West and that section that we're talking about filling in with the concrete, um it was my understanding that all of our grassy, our grassy boulevards, the three feet was our minimum because that is a general standard for for being able to grow sod, grass in those. Um is there a reason that that is less than that three foot amount?
Um, I guess from from a dimensional standpoint, I'm pretty sure that that is less than three feet. I know we had noted two and a half on there, but uh Brent, that might be closer to one and a half or two, it sounds like. Um, I'm sorry. I'm pretty confident it isn't. It is three.
Are we talking Third Street West? This is.
Yes, yes, yep.
I I did.
I'm just curious as to why, uh because I remember this plan's going through and it was supposed to be, from my recollection, it was supposed to be three feet at a minimum because that's the optimal to get the minimum optimal and get to get the correct post. So is there a reason that we didn't end up with that to start with?
I I don't re- I don't recall that standard, but I I would just drop this up as an engineering oversight, which is, you know, and since STAN Tech isn't here to defend themselves, it's probably all the all the better to to blame it on them. I I I couldn't honestly tell you how that ended up. I know we've had some conversations about it. It looks it's one of those things where you just wonder how that could have happened, but it's there, but um it's certainly something that uh we'll be keeping our eye out going forward because it, under normal circumstances, I think you're a hundred percent correct. You wouldn't leave a twelve inch or eighteen inch, whatever it is, stretch of turf for a a resident, I mean.
Are there trees planted in that now? I think there aren't any.
Not not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I thought there was something down there. Okay, so we wouldn't be removing any trees.
There could be one, but not to my recollection. We'll have to uh um verify that if there is.
Okay, and then I was just wondering with with the snow removal for the sidewalks, if that area gets used right now, especially because we have to plow it from parking and then they have to clear the sidewalk. If that small area isn't somewhat of a necessary evil, I'll call it. Um have we have we looked into anything about about that?
I mean, I know it was snow storage.
Yeah, so I mean, they go by the plow and then you've got the sidewalk right there. Well, we have, you know, we have sidewalks that go right up to the the street and other places. Um it's I guess I was just curious if there was any thought behind storing the snow by the water or the city in that, you know, as we plow. Is think that will make any difference?
I guess I defer to chat on the operations. I would say from a a big picture perspective, in in the downtown, in our central business district, all of our sidewalks are to the street or to the curb, so. Um but I defer to chat on operations.
Yeah, that that section of Third Street West, all that snow is uh basically pushed down to the end, to the very left or bottom of the screen, and then it's removed the next day. So there is no snow storage necessity in that area.
Okay, all right, thank you. And and the the next one is uh by the hair salon there where the wood chips are. Um you know, when you look down the rest of the street, that's grass boulevard there. It's a pretty wide space for some of the rest of them. Seems to be doing okay. There's trees planted there. This one wasn't, sod was not put down here? Can you help me understand why the entire street was done with sod, but not that spot?
Uh I I I don't, I don't. It uh this was completed, I think, in with the twenty seventeen project. I don't have the detail. I think it was it was decorative and it was stopped there. There hadn't been sidewalk there in the past. So um just from the top of my head, I would speculate that it was just a a project cost of a way to to save some money because there wasn't sidewalk there. So.
There was sidewalk here, Brett, on that side of the hair salon. Excuse.
Where the where the wood chips are?
Oh, no, I I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I thought you meant on an entire side.
No, I just mean that there wasn't sidewalk where the wood chips are, and so as a cost-saving measure, I'm speculating that uh the project chose to not include si- new sidewalk in that area. It was just to replace the existing.
Okay. Well, I will say I see that on a daily basis, and although it's it's a nice lot to have, the pretty wood chips there, rain events and snow events, they tend to get everywhere, so I uh I'm all for uh kind of pretty bad finishing that section off, so we don't have that problem longer. Uh for the bump outs, I, can we go to the closer views, starting with one? Okay, um I have a few issues with this. Um, one of them is the lack of parking stalls. Um, but I live downtown. I have firsthand knowledge of how busy it can be down here on a Saturday afternoon. Uh and that is, you know, the district hubs open, Carver General's open, the bars and restaurants are open. I mean, there's oftentimes cars I can't even park in front of my own house because the street is full. And I live on Third Street East, which is fine. I'm happy to see people out and about. Um but I also um not want to look for losing additional parking stalls on our main drag. Also, I think it puts the disadvantage to um, you know, Lisa's place for sure. Um she's losing parking completely in front of her building on this. And then on the other side of the street, we do have some businesses there also. Uh before I keep going on a side note, we do have a driveway entrance that goes into Wrightwood's historical garage there. It's on the Broadway side. Do we know, have we talked with him? I'm assuming that we have. Uh closing that off, what his response might be?
The council member might say, just because of the kind of dramatic the dramatic impact that that would have, I didn't show him the city admiral issues with losing that driveway access because of the access that he has on Main.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Uh that if if this were to go forward, that at least a bump out there would would affect him as as uh in his property in a way that he takes as detrimental. Can you go to scenario two? Um, let's see. Okay, I guess, you know, one and two both have this. So with the motorcycle parking, I think it's kind of silly. It's kind of irrelevant. I realize trying to name something to to put a name to some space there. To me, it's just, it's still wasted space because this is Minnesota, six months of the year, you're not on motorcycles anyways. So it's still just, you know, at least half the time, a a a space that's wasted. If we go to scenario three and four, um, how many spots do we lose on the right-hand side with this one?
Um, what do you mean right hand side?
The Lisa's place side.
You you lose this this one, so you lose one.
One saw.
Yeah, okay, one.
Okay, and then if you can go to number four for me. Okay. So when I in, when I um started looking at this and thinking about this project uh with the bump outs, you know, I'm was a proponent of having some kind of a stop four-way stop here, especially during the um construction time. I don't, but not, it's a detriment to our, you know, downtown area either when it comes to our businesses and the number of parking stalls we have. To me, this one, I know that it's not, it's not matchy-matchy, we'll call it that. Uh but sometimes it doesn't have to be, you know, mirrored in order to be functional. Um I think the bump out on the right width side, I guess, the outfit um makes sense because you have to be able to see that stop sign. Um however, if you are coming on Main Street West and taking a left onto Broadway, if people are into the pedestrian crossing, you have a long time to see them. You know, they're they're already in your sightline. It's really important, um obviously, to get the bump out if they're coming from Broadway to turn right on Main Street West, that they would be able to have a stop sign that's very visible as people went across the road there. The sidewalk, um for the Main Street East side, that is what it looks like, or the the corner there, that's what it looks like now. I don't believe that we have, uh oops, other side, Brett, the Main Street East side, there we go. Uh that's how it looks now. And again, if you were stopping at that stop sign to turn right, you're going to already have a sightline because of the way that the car's angle and the way you're driving of any pedestrians in that area. Um and I don't know that we have any crash data that supports that we have had issues with people taking right-hand turns there, um or even um left-hand turns that have been, you know, that have been accidents or near misses or anything like that. So for me, this one, um if we were to move forward with a bump out, this is the least intrusive, I think, into our system of roads in the downtown and our system of parking. Um I also think that it um it gets what we are looking for when it comes to to slowing down that traffic that's taking that right to head to head out on Main Street West. And that to me, that was the reason that I initially had talked about this or pushed for was to try and slow that traffic down, especially as numbers get higher during this function.
Christy, can I just interrupt you for a second to ask a clarifying question? It, Erin, in this scenario on the east side of the street, on the Lisa's place side of the street, it does um we do lose one parking spot on that side, correct?
Yes, as shown, it's one spot. Um just because of how the the crosswalk blocks angle across the intersection, um you think it's probably going to be too tight to save it. No, we can, we can definitely look at it closer, but I didn't want to promise that we would save it at this point. It's a good, so.
Okay, Christy, I just want to ask that question because I don't know if it.
Sure, in order to straighten out that um that pet crossing that crosses Broadway, are you able to shift a stop sign closer, like a straighter line rather than such a diagonal line? Um when I say closer, sorry, it's hard to do this. Yeah, thank you, with that direction? Um, when I say closer, sorry, it's hard to do this. Yeah, thank you, with that direction.
Um. Shift it closer to the intersection.
Can you see where Brett's arrow is?
Yeah, oh, shift it over there.
Yeah, so it's it's straighter, which maybe would help to be able to save that other parking spot?
Um, we could maybe shift it. I think there's a street light there potentially. Um. Can't remember off the top of my head. I thought there was a street light in there that we were trying to avoid, but. Um, you could maybe move it a little bit more to the south, as you mentioned.
Okay.
Might be possible.
Okay, I I believe I know there's a street light on that corner. Um, and I know with eighty eight, but we'll have a a larger area, even if. You know, accessible. I don't know if that means it has to have a straight route or if it can be a route that maybe if they had to curve around and. As long as they have three to three thirty six inches squared. Um. Even if it's not a straight shot to the. Uh, head ram? I'm asking a question. I don't know if that, does that come into play? Do you know?
You're s- you're saying if you, so I'm just having a little bit of a hard time following.
Yeah, and it's hard to do it on, I'm sorry, it's hard to explain it when you're online too. So.
It is, yeah.
Let's say, um, if you're coming in front of Rick, well, on Main Street. And you're heading across towards the Lisa's section.
Yep.
There's a street light there. You had to end up staying in the in the concrete purple zone. Take going around it, going around the street light and then hitting it. Is there a way? I mean, does it have to be? Certain amount of like straight line that you have to have in there for uh to get to the pad ramp or?
Oh, sure. Um, so you need to maintain. In in its most general sense, you need to maintain a four foot pedestrian access route. So it doesn't really speak specifically to like. You know, go going around objects as much, but. You just kinda have to use engineering judgment and. You know, lay it out. Whatever you feel is, you know, comfortable, so. Um, I wouldn't wanna jog it too much, but maybe, you know, a little deflection point is at the end of the world. So. I I'd have to look at it closer and see where that street light is exactly.
Okay, okay. Um, and then Brent, this question is for you. I know that we had talked about having some temporary. Stop signs, whether they were in the middle of the road, like on the divider line or however it was during construction. Um, is that not an option or that a rat like? Instead of doing this whole thing as a project, not whole thing, this section part of the project, um.
So you could do it, to to my understanding, and Dan, Lannis, or Aaron could jump in. My understanding from the correspondence I've seen from the county is. You could do temporary, but then you'd have to temporarily uh shut down those parking stalls as well. Yeah, and and to go along with that, they don't wanna, they don't wanna go back and forth. Once they change the intersection control, they don't wanna pull it later. So. Their recommendation wasn't if.
Well, we pull intersection controls all the time during construction, so I'm not gonna buy that. I'm like, thanks, Aaron.
Well, that's that's, yeah, that's fine. Um, they they were just saying if if we're gonna do the project anyways, we it probably just make the most sense just to do it, you know, do it once and have it done. For the, you know, for JCP next summer.
Right, yeah, I think all some of our mock related to Aaron's comment, I think, but the county's comment was there are intersection. Uh, or there are traffic controls that are changed within. Construction zones. Their concern was this wouldn't be considered a construction zone and there'd be. Stop sign and then not, and they're concerned that someone would think that someone on Main is gonna stop. And the stop sign is gone. And so we're, this is, it's kind of the, it's a really good question to ask, cause we're a little bit here at the mercy of. Harbor County, cause it. It's their road and anything that we want to do, we're s- we're subject to kind of. Um, I mean frankly, they don't even have to have a good reason if they don't want something on that road to function the way we're proposing. They don't need to allow it. Or if it was, this was the intersection of Ash and Fourth. You know, the council would have maximum flexibility. So we're we're a little bit constrained, but so I think that's a really good point to break out.
Yeah. Thanks. And Aaron, I'm not trying to kill the messenger either, so.
No, I totally understand. Yep.
Um, so for me, I. If if it comes down to, it sounds like all or nothing here. So either we, you know, we put a temporary and then it keeps going, even though it is a detour route. That we, you know, the county is going to be more insistent on getting something. Um, we will be taking this road over eventually, so I would like it if we're going to do something at this point in time to be what we want. Cause we're the ones who are going to maintain it and have to do, you know, live with it after we hit five thousand. Um. Again, to be as intrusive or least intrusive as possible to the downtown businesses. I would, I would, at this point. Prefer to explore scenario four. Um, and then, and I guess the temporary ones may be out. And if we can't, we can't do it, then maybe we we don't do anything at this time. But again, with the park, losing the parking stalls and being intrusive to our businesses and the full big and what we're trying to. You know, we're trying to help them and we're trying to support them in the downtown, not create additional barriers. I guess four is going to be something that is the most appealing to me. Um, when it comes to the rest of the project, we're filling in concrete areas and fixing up that kind of stuff. When it comes to the wood chip spots and things, I think that makes total sense, so. Um, those are my comments for that. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Kristi. Glenn, do you wanna go next?
Yeah. We're looking, well, my first question was.
Glenn, start over again. Sorry, you cut out at the beginning there.
Hello?
You cut out at the beginning. You you're you sound okay now, but start from the beginning.
Okay.
Until you cut out again, unless you're thinking, but you might have frozen.
I'll slow down. My first comment when I saw this was how many. Over. I like scenario, um. Two. For the simple fact. Um. I do like aesthetics. I was wondering if we could move the bump out of the west side. Of Broadway down into, um, kind of the Main Street. Maybe one or two of those blocks. Um. Of the of the pedestrian walk, you know what I mean? Aaron?
Yes.
So it would, so instead of, um. We might be able to save one of those stalls, um. On the on the on the west side there. But we'd still have enough for for um motorcycle parking. But. When we're doing bump outs and everything, I do like the aesthetics of have even having a smaller one on the on the east side there. Um. I fear that if we went with scenario four. Where your um storm sewer, where the word sewer is, I think people will be parking there. Even if it is.
Sure.
I just, I don't like the way that that angle is on the beds pedestrian crossing. I understand Christie's concerns about losing all those parking spots. But the reality is, we're only losing, um, the one on the east side of the street. And if we bump that, and if we on the on the west side move that down a little bit into, um, um. For lack of better words, into the intersection there, the the bump out on the west side. We might be able to save a spot there. So, um, reality is we're only losing two parking spots on the on the west side of the street. As far as everything else on the project, I like the idea of filling in the grass and wood chips. Um. Just because it. It needs, I I think it'll clean up downtown a lot. And it'll also give safety and security to that intersection. So, um. If I had my druthers, I'd like option two for the simple fact. We are, we are making a bump out, we're preserving a couple extra parking spots. And yet we're still making safety to the road. That's all I got.
Alright, thank you, Glenn. Uh, let's see, who have next here? Joy, do you wanna go next?
Sure, um. I concur with Glenn and Kristi about the comments about filling in these sidewalks on Third. Do we have any feedback from any residents about those areas and that maybe they're difficult to maintain or anything like that? That helps support this?
No, not firsthand. I mean, they.
Okay.
In kind of the vein of under promise, over deliver, I wanna, you know, this first step, and this is something that the mayor and I discussed this afternoon. We wanted to first like make sure the council was in general support of it before we started engaging.
Okay.
Residents, so I I think we can, I know we can get to that step, but, um, we're.
Okay. We haven't heard anything, you know, up until this point. That was kind of my question, if there was anything we've heard in the interim since this has been put in place.
Yep.
That would, um, trigger us to take a look at those areas.
Joy, I've been contacted by a resident who lives in that area, uh, one of them, and they they did say that they, um.
Uh-huh.
Were having trouble within the, you know, that small area. Now, at that point, there was no, I could say, or, you know, this wasn't a topic to say, well, we can fill it.
Sure.
But I do see specifically one resident did come to say to me that ever since that was done, the sod just hasn't grown right and, you know, and. Things like that. So I, we do.
Okay, okay, thank you. I I figured there must have been something, um, just because of the way it looks. Um, okay, so my other comments, um. I. So, you know, the intention here, as we've all said, is we wanna make this intersection safer, especially with increased traffic from the detour. Um, I I wanna make it safer for both cars and pedestrians. Um, which is why I think that four way stop is really important. I would never cross that pad exiting. Um, from the west side to the east side or vice versa. Um, you know, north of Main Street in today's world, and I don't see anybody else doing it. Everybody else would jaywalk. Um, in between the streets instead. Just cause they can see their better line of sight. So, um, I I like the idea of making that pad crossing really safe. Um, I also have the same reservations about reducing parking spots. Um, I do wanna express a reservation about having compact parking spots. I feel like those will be completely ignored. So if we can try to avoid that, we're not gonna have a way to place it. Um, there's just no way. And I know that, um. At least my experience in driving uh by this intersection often. Is that uh longer trucks tend to park towards the intersection just because it's easier to get in and out of. Compact parking is not gonna work. Um, so I'd like to avoid that if we can. Um, minimizing losing parking spots, I think is a good priority as well, whatever we can creatively do. Um, I'm gonna lean more towards a scenario four with Kristi because I think it's okay. I get the aesthetic. Uh, concern Glenn is expressing, but. We also know that the traffic pattern is very much going, um, you know, between coming west from Maine. And going north on Broadway and then vice versa. We know that is a heavier traffic pattern, if you will. And I'm okay if we design it towards that, right, where we have the bump out on the west side and focus on that. Um, I also like the suggestions of moving that bump out closer to the intersection or south. If we possibly can to minimize, uh. Parking space loss.
Just one note about that I I would like to make. Uh, we, I think we could look at moving the bump out to the south as, as you've mentioned.
Yeah.
Um. What that will require us to do is in order for trucks to make that turn.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have to, um, if you see on the west leg of the intersection, there's a little yellow striping, like a four foot wide striped area right there.
Yeah.
That's so trucks have the ability for their outside tire to approach on in the middle of the road. We'll have to add additional width to that, what I'll call striped median in the middle of the road and allow them to encroach further to the south. Um, so what that would require, I believe there's onsite parallel parking on Main Street right now, going eastbound approaching the intersection. Um. I believe that's the case. That might eliminate parallel parking.
Mm.
Potentially, if if they have to go south, south far enough to make the movement.
Aaron, Joy's question about that bump out, rather than totally moving it, I know Glenn had said something too. About, um, near the orange area, can you just make it smaller that it doesn't have to take up quite so much space? And leave it where it is?
So it's that, um, that portion of the of the design is purely based on the site distance issue. So we just need to keep that area clear. From site, sightline obstruction. So there's really not much we can do about it over there.
Uh-huh. I see.
But, um, you know, if you move the whole bump out. You move the stop sign with it, so that's why it allows us to maybe keep another stall or two. Cause you end up shifting the whole system south. That makes sense.
I see what you're saying. Yep, no, that makes sense. And your point about the truck traffic as well, um, is also well worth considering. Okay, well, you've had my input.
Alright, thank you, Joy. Lori?
Yes, I do have some input to give. Um, I'm getting, first I'm getting scenarios mixed up a little bit. Can we go back to the slide and just go one, two, three again? One is, cause I look, I've been looking at, um, in the packet.
Yeah, so council members here, one is what you saw, we and we've added the other scenarios, they're in the the digital digital packet right now. Um, so one is kind of, I would call it the maximize motorcycle parking. The bump outs are reflective of the same uh geometry that you'll see in.
Okay. Is one, I'm I'm actually pulled the packet right now to like, um, is it, you know, what?
They were, they were added, I would say, maybe an hour before the meeting. So if you w- if you downloaded it before. Um, six o'clock, they're not, they're probably not showing.
Alright, and so can I, I, it doesn't make sense for me to try to figure out which one matches up to option one or option two?
So thi- this is, well, I can run through them for you. So scenario one is the regular bump outs, existing geometry. Uh, scenario two is again that same geometry showing, um, more compact parking. I I would say that council member McNakes' comment is is spot on related to.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
It would be a bear to try, you'd have to have a definition for compact cars. Um, but that could be kind of make clear. Scenario three is, uh, a mini bump out on the east side, um. So it provides more parking, you know, in front of Lisa's place. And then scenario four is, you know, essentially no bump out on the east side. So that's kind of the running through of those four scenarios.
Okay, can you, can you go back and look at three?
Yep.
Try to see what the difference between three and two, mini bump outs.
So this, the the geometry here is kind of this wide backward C here.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's shrunk up, you know, on this side. Where two, you know, they're they're.
Okay, the more symmetrical or, um, uh, yeah, okay. Um, so.
They're similar, uh, with the.
Ultimately, we're looking to give the engineers some direction, correct?
Yeah, you know, if you look at like, uh, and they don't have to be, I'm glad you asked that, council members here.
That's.
It doesn't have to be, um. S- specifically scenario four, there, if you think about these as ingredients to making a cake, just tell us, you know, we like part of scenario four. But also part of scenario two, and we'll have enough to kind of go on. We'll, we won't be able to design, build this for you tonight, but.
Exactly.
I already have a lot of like thoughts in my head based on the feedback that I've heard. Uh, to meet with Dan and Chad and Aaron and Aaron to kind of bring you some.
Got it. Okay, so, um, yeah, so after the presentation, my feedback would be, I don't support scenario four. Um, my thinking is my first priorities are safety. And the aesthetics and also knowing long term that there's other future enhancement plans and. It it won't be anytime real soon, but I. I foresee future projects won't take away parking. I know this is gonna take away, you know, have, you know, count, hopefully just count on one hand how many. Um, if it wasn't for that, I could foresee future projects adding parking of that. I feel really different. Um. But I lean towards plan two. Um, I also agree that identifying something. Um, but I lean towards plan two. Um, I also agree that identifying something as compact parking when, when we're not gonna be able to enforce it, um, or just really go on and figure out how to manage that. Um, maybe let's just take that out of the scenario. So, yeah, taking out compact parking, um, I lean towards scenario two.
All right. Thank you, Lori. Um, so my.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Glenn.
I just wanna clarify with the council, um, where my stance was. It's option two, which would be scenario three, according to Brent's scenarios and options that were laid out in the packet.
The one we're looking at now, correct?
Okay. Correct, correct. That is, that is my preferred, um, uh, layout of choice. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Glenn.
Wait, Glenn, so I understand, so you said the mini bump out? I'm just gonna use the mini bump out, is your?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the mini bump out.
I just, I didn't understand.
All right, um, so my feedback, um, for ingredients for the cake, if you will. First of all, um, Brent, Aaron, everybody else who worked on this. Um, thank you so much for being so nimble. I know that there was just one scenario as recently as one o'clock this afternoon. So I really appreciate you guys, um, being reactive to the feedback that I assumed Brent was getting on our one-on-ones that he always has um, in advance of council meetings with us. And I think that this is terrific that you guys were responsive to that feedback and whipped this together on such short notice. So thank you for that. Um, you know, I think that, um, probably working on the easier parts of this project. I think that the need for sidewalk improvements in the stretch of downtown Carver are definitely in need. In those areas where the, um, the brick is crumbling, you know, it's, I'm not the most coordinated thing on two feet, but I could lay it down any day of the week in a pair of tennis shoes on that stretch. So, um, we definitely need to do something about that. Um, as far as the area on Third Street and kind of filling in that gap where the grass can't grow and it doesn't make much sense to have it there in the first place. Um, as much as it pains me to have not done that right the first time and to be making, uh, repairs and kind of a significant change just four years later. I think that's something that needs to be done, um, as well. Um, let's see. I also, um, appreciate taking a look at this on January nineteenth so that hopefully we can get this all done and buttoned up before this becomes one of the busiest thoroughfares in the city of Carver when we see traffic rerouted off of John and the Carver Parkway for this. Um, my preference out of these four scenarios is scenario three. And I would like to see a second compact spot shoehorned in there if we can, um, if that's at all possible. Joy, I hear you and that's good feedback and good for thought as far as the, um, enforcement of those parking spots. Um, however, you know, we have a, a couple of sheriff's deputies who I'm sure would be more than happy to help enforce that and to make sure that an eye is kept on those areas. So that's not as much of a concern as losing parking. I have a very low threshold and very little appetite for losing parking in our downtown area. Unrelated to this project, um, the owner of Carver Bay and Tackle reached out to me in that, um, chewy. He was, he had issues with parking at his business, um, which is that, yeah, where Brent is circling the, the white roof on the left-hand side or the west side of Broadway. Um, he had some issues this weekend with it being one of the first weekends, that the bars are back in and that there was good traffic downtown. However, that was a hindrance to his, um, business. So with that feedback, again, completely coincidental and unrelated to this perspective project, I really wanna do, um, whatever we can to avoid losing parking spots and certainly not eight spots in the original scenario. So, um, my preference is for scenario three. I don't know if I said that yet or, uh, or not. Um, I, Glenn, I appreciate you thinking outside the box and wanting to, to move that western bump out a little bit more to the south. However, if that means robbing Peter to pay Paul and then losing parking on Main Street, I'm not for it. I, I'm not, that's not a worthwhile exchange for me. You know, I can see the future where we have a splash pad or some other park in that area that's on the furthest south part of, of Broadway. Um, right before you get to the levee. And I think it just makes more sense to have really short, um, efficient crossings there. And I don't like scenario four because it's, it's longer. And quite frankly, all things considered, you're losing the exact, the exact same amount of parking as scenario three. So you lose one spot in front of Lisa's and then one spot on, or I'm sorry, as proposed, two spots, um, on the west side of Broadway. However, I'd like to see that decreased to losing just one spot on each side. If we can at all safely, feasibly, possibly shoehorn another spot into that west side in front of the gas station. So, um, I think that that is my feedback. Um, does anybody else have anything additional that they thought of?
Mayor Johnson, I have, um, something in response to your, your, uh, comments on the compact parking.
Go ahead. Mm-hmm.
Um, I think if we're looking to have compact parking stalls, I think we're going to have to come to the realization that it's going to be a suggestion. Um, I myself drive an SUV and parked in a compact, uh, spot in the ramp last week. So I am just as guilty of saying, you know what, it's open and parking. Um, so if we are going to have compact spaces, I think that, you know, having our police serpents, having that a focal point to somehow be policing that is not, is not something that I, is important to me. If we wanna market as compact parking now, if someone's, you know, I'm assuming is the actual stall going to be smaller? I mean, if your truck is, you know, if you have a huge truck and you're parking out and you're blocking the road, you're going to realize it. But I don't think that we can go on the basis that if we just call it compact parking, that only compact cars are gonna be there. I hate to see, you know, nine-one-one calls coming in to saying, there's a truck parked in the compact spot. So I don't know what we wanna, if we wanna discuss that a little bit more, that would be great.
Yeah, Christie, I, uh, I don't care what you call it. I don't wanna lose parking. Um, so I don't have any expectation that our deputies, um, sit there or, you know, patrol that area every fifteen minutes. Um, but I think that a fair amount can probably be done with enforcement. I don't, I don't know. I haven't thought that part of it through too much. It truly, it just isn't a concern of mine. I just don't wanna see us lose the parking spots downtown.
Yeah, well, I think, uh, my, obviously my preference that, I feel the same way about parking stalls. Uh, but I do agree with Joy that compact parking stalls, uh, if we sign them that way, sign them that way. But I think that enforcement of that is probably gonna be something that we're just not going to be able to monitor.
Yeah, that's fair, absolutely fair feedback, Christie. It's just, it's truly not, you know, a huge concern of mine. I think if we can just lose two spots, which I, I don't think either Chewie or Lisa will be super excited about. But I think if we can go down from the potential of having lost eight down to just two, I think that that's a, a more palatable, um, option. And even, you know, if we're not able to, um, as I'm advocating for shoehorn that second compact spot in, um, it would be three spots that we lose then, which is the same as scenario four.
Okay, so I guess for myself, what, what I would personally like to see for the next meeting is kind of the revamps scenario three and scenario four. Because we talked about scenario four, about possibly moving that pad, um, walk a little bit and seeing how that looks. Um, I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I, I'd like to see, you know, some of our comments taken and maybe a little bit of reshaping, reworking, seeing how this might look if, if the bump out, I understand if the scenario three, let's just say, was shifted a little bit, that we had a full spot, whatever. Um, whatever all the conglomerate of our question or our comments came to. But for me, I'd like to see three and four come back with our comments taken into consideration.
Did we have anybody else who liked four? Struggling?
I, I liked, I mentioned I liked four, um, mostly because I didn't feel like I needed, um, symmetrical bump outs on either side. But scenario three is also not symmetrical. Um, it does give a straighter pedestrian crossing.
Glenn, are you about to say something?
No.
Okay. Um, Brent, would that be doable to get revised renderings of scenarios three and four for our first meeting in February?
Uh, Councilmember Ramon, could you, would you mind just sharing again the, I, I'm not tracking the changes that you are asking for in scenario four?
Okay, we had, um, talked about the pad ramp, um, or the pad ramp, the pad crossing.
Yeah.
Uh, straighten that out a little bit. Now, again, we don't know exactly where that streetlight falls on the corner by Greg, that's building there. So once we know that, we'll have a little better understanding of whether we can straighten that out or not. Um, I think to me that might be helpful to know. Um, I'm trying to think back to all the comments. I had a lot of comments before. Um, well, a lot of mine were just around the fact of when you're coming from the stop signs on Main Street West going on to Broadway, taking that left. You can, you have a sight line there. And then when you take a Main Street east right-hand turn in front of Lisa's, you already have a sight line. I mean, that's what's currently there. Mentioned, I didn't think there was any crash data or, you know, near miss data that has happened, uh, in those particular spots. Um, I'm not, I can't remember from, we, we have to look back at, back at the video now. But, um, did we talk about moving this one a little bit because we had, is this compact or in the orange, is this compact or was this?
Orange is, orange is motorcycle.
Okay, I thought motorcycle, something has to be done there. If, I would much rather have compact than motorcycle. If we have to shift a little bit to make a next spot rather than motorcycle parking.
Uh, I guess what, if I could offer some of the, a piece of information that would be helpful. Um, so that, as I think we have, we have enough information as a staff to come back. I guess I'd prefer not to, to bring back multiple scenarios. Cause I think it ultimately, just from a meeting standpoint, is can, can be confusing where, I think we have identified from each council member what's important and what your goals are, what you wanna preserve, that we could come back with something. I think the one, um, divergent point, um, that I, I'd need some resolution on as a, or that we'd need resolution on from a staff is, um, I think council member Sayre was advocating for scenario two. And I, uh, I don't know if anyone agrees with that or not, but I'd wanna, like to vet that. Cause it, uh, exclusive of that comment or other council members that support that. What I'm hearing is we, like bump outs, show us a scenario that, that absolutely minimizes parking impact and maximizes pedestrian safety. And we're not gonna be able to design that tonight. And it's not fair for us to, like, ask the council to try to design that. Like, but I think we have the input we need. The only way that we would be successful with that, and it'll, it might take multiple meetings to, to hone on in this. But if, if there is a want to do the symmetrical bump outs, you know, I guess that would be the variant if you wanted to show up something different to this, or if as a majority you said, no, we want to do the la, the former and, um, maximize parking, you know, maintain safety for, um, sight distances, et cetera.
Okay, Brent, um, so we.
Mister, actually, Mister Merrick.
Yep.
Just a second, so, Brent.
If I can, if I can clarify what my comments were about scenario two.
Go ahead, Lori.
Yeah, so I said I, I'm not in favor of scenario four. And I said I lean towards scenario two. So I'm not like super strong. So I mean, if it's gonna be a blend of two and three, um, the, back to the priorities being the, um, safety and then the, uh, aesthetics, which to me was scenario two. One other thing that I like about scenario two is that pedestrian, pedestrian crossing isn't so long and angled. But I will need to learn more from the engineers because just for me, this one looks safer. But I know Aaron had some comments about that other one that was angled. So I'm open to a blend of them, but this was the one that I leaned towards. I just wanted to.
Yep, that's helpful because I think ultimately the difference between scenario three and four is just essentially the, the, the shape of the curb line. And so understanding what the council likes in scenario four and three, and frankly, all of the scenarios. Uh, we can meet together as a leadership team and say, okay, how, how can, oh, sorry.
Brent, excuse me, excuse me. I, I would like to see three and four. To me, they're very different. We've got two bumps up, bump outs as opposed to having only one. So because we don't have all of the answers from the engineers on where the lighting is, whether we can move that pad crossing or not, I would like to see the different options between those two, as long as the rest of the council comes to a meeting of the minds that, you know, we're not all going for number one or something like that. For me, I, I prefer to have some of those answers and to see what, what two different ones can look like. And then the council can debate it from there.
So Christie, I, um, really liked where Brent was going and trying to work into, I think we're both at, Glenn, what was your preference, three?
Yes, scenario three, option two with the mini bump out.
Okay.
Cause it preserves as many parking spots as possible.
Yep.
It squares up the pedestrian crossing, the sight lines are good. And it's not symmetrical bump outs, but bump outs up at, uh, Third and Main or Broadway aren't perfectly symmetrical either. But it does clear up the safety concern and it preserves as many parking spots as possible.
Right, if we were to come to the agreement on masses, that scenario three is the correct option. But, you know, I, I have said it and Joy has said it, that she, um, had some, you know, some preferences with number four as well. I think out of due diligence, we are reviewing this at this point, and I think we'll be able to make a decision at the next House meeting. But I really feel for myself that I would like to have, see the two different options and have the, being that we don't know where some of those placements are on the corner of Main Street and Broadway, whether we can straighten that out or not, and be able to just see the difference and then make the best choice from there.
And to clarify, Christie, the different, the main difference that you see between option four, scenario three and scenario four is scenario three has two bump outs, scenario four has one. Right, the dif- big difference? Okay, got it.
Yep, thank you.
Brent, is that doable?
Yeah, whatever that council wants is what we'll do.
Um.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, let's go ahead and. Boy, Christie, I, I'm seeing it from Brent's perspective in that if they work on a revised scenario that tries to work in everything that we're working with instead of sticking into these silos of the two existing scenarios, which I'm seeing just process of elimination. Lori, I see you, I hear you. I know that you prefer two or three, but I think between, um, the majority, it's between three or four. But I think if we could work on a scenario that demonstrates safety. But I think if we could work on a scenario that demonstrates safety, straight crossing, bump outs, and the absolute least amount of um loss of parking spaces, that would be my priority.
Mary Johnson?
Your preference, yep.
I had the, just to, to clarify, I wasn't, I'm not making a strong application or recommending that we just do three. It's just a, um, I feel like it's part of my responsibility or I, I sometimes will advocate for processes to make them more efficient. But sometimes efficiency, efficiency isn't always the best route. And so sometimes kind of this sausage making where you're kind of getting into different details and scenarios is, is needed. So um I don't take it as an affront or uh you know, you know, anything other than just wanting to look at different scenarios. So I, I have, I have no issue with council member Ma wanting to see two, or if the council wants to see three, et cetera. Uh, it was just a suggestion on formatting and process, so um no hard no follow-ups relates to that.
Okay. Got it, okay, thank you. Well then, um, go ahead, Christie.
Oh, Courtney, I was just gonna ask, are you, did you want to eliminate, oh, Brent had asked for some elimination then? Did you want to, have we kind of come to, or do you want to ask the council if we want to eliminate certain ones?
Well, yeah, council, let me know if I'm way off base, but I'm pretty sure we've eliminated scenario one, which was the original one that was in our packet. Um, council members shake your heads furiously if I am wrong with this, and Christie, I feel like I've got a really good handle.
I think that the main reason for eliminating scenario one, it has too many parking spot elimination.
Yeah. Um, and then, you know.
I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Sorry, I somehow got muted. Um, so I guess um, it, it, council, any objections if we ask for Christie's proposal, asking for revisions to scenario, scenarios three and four for our next meeting?
No.
Okay, Laurie, no objections? Joy?
No, I think, and I, just to reiterate, I think Brent has summarized the priorities he's heard from the council tonight, which are create a safe intersection for pedestrians and vehicles with sightlines and optimized crossings, if you can say it that way. Minimize the impact of parking spots. That's the criteria, right?
Yep. Glenn, any objections to that? He's shaking his head and, Christie?
Obviously, I have no objection. Objection to three and four, I wanna say thank you.
Okay, um, my only other question before we move on um from this is speaking of shoehorn, I feel like we're gonna be a little bit crunched for time to get this done before um the road construction. And specifically the Jonathan Carver Parkway road construction starts. Are we, how much of a, a time crunch are we on here?
I think we're fine.
Okay.
I mean, um, it's kind of a moving target. We'll bring, we'll bring uh information back to your, your next meeting, but ultimately, the council can decide, you know, when to do the project. And if, if we feel like there's a, or if the council feels like there's a, a window is missed, uh, then we'll, we'll just, we'll wait or discuss options that we have available to the county. Um, or advocate for a different, you know, position. Maybe it happens after and we can, and then under that scenario, they let us do the temporary stop signs. Um, but I think right now we'll push to try to get this done prior to the main thrust of the uh detour occurring.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Brent, do you have the amount of direction and clarity that you need from us?
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, unless anybody has anything else that they wanna talk about for the Don't Tap Improvement Project, I would like to move on uh to item eight point three, the twenty twenty-one legislative priorities. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for this, in a second. Uh, the city council, uh, and we adopts, uh, at least for probably the last five years, uh legislative priorities. Um, the legislative session has uh started. Uh, once they are adopted, uh, we send those out to Representative Jim Nash and a new Senator Julia Coleman. Uh, we emailed those out and have typically followed up when the League of Minnesota Cities has their cities day. Uh, we use it as a talking points, uh memo to share with them, uh, when we meet with them. So most of these policies that you'll see within the packet are, are ones that you've seen for quite some time. Uh, the first being a funding for the flood protection infrastructure related to the bonding bill, uh, which the council's fully aware of. Uh, the second is a, is a little bit more detailed related to the flood hazard mitigation assistance grant program. This is the funding, the city received that money through the bonding bill, but it's actually money that was dedicated uh to this program, and so we're advocating for more money in there. Also the protection of local control. Oftentimes, there are various statutes or, excuse me, various proposed laws that have reverse referendums on basic city driven processes. And so um to keep local control for that, fees for services, and support of opt-out transit systems are areas that you've seen before, so the fees for services is related to, um, my, my computer is frozen here. Knock amongst yourselves for a second.
It's January.
Uh, so there we go. So cities are related, or is related to cities charging fees based on services, permits and licenses. So the kind of the building permit fees, the city uh did a business report through AB Bill related to that. But in the past, there are bits of concerns about cities making money off of building permit fees. Um, and so that's related to that. The support of the opt-out transit system, right now there are no more opt-outs that are allowed under our system. And that is an issue that Aaron Smith is, is working on related to um, to, related to the city's transit service with Southwest Transit on a Carver station. So right now, even if the city wanted to join the Transit Taxi District, and I would say if, capital I F, uh, we would have to work through Metro Transit, and then Metro Transit would then have to contract through Southwest Transit for that service in Carver. We couldn't just become an opt-out and join uh Southwest Transit in what I'd call a typical fashion. We're also advocating for funding resources for streets. Um, kinda dipping in a little bit to kind of the, the national, uh, national politics. There, there is likely to be uh some conversations about elections. And so we're advocating for our representatives to include election officials for any changes or modifications. So folks like uh Vicky and Brenda Good, uh, there sometimes could be a, a lot of unintended consequences related to elections and the administration. Sometimes it may look great on paper, but the implementation uh can be challenging. And so we're advocating um for election officials to be included in those conversations. Uh, infrastructure fees, uh, supporting legislation that would give cities the ability to impose infrastructure fees so that new development pays their fair share. Um, and then uh, one that, you know, we've had out there for a while and might not be likely to change. But I do think it's a, it's an interesting topic related to how people consume news. We spend thousands of dollars related to publication requirements that end up in the legal section of the Chaska Herald. And I think, you know, almost everybody in the community would support the concept of a local newspaper in the Chaska Herald. I would say that same number of people have equally never read a legal notice in the legal section of the Chaska Herald. And so um it certainly fit how people consumed information probably thirty, forty years ago. Uh, but it's certainly not now, and it comes at a cost uh to local units of government. So asking uh for a review of that. And then something that the city is all too familiar with is special assessment requirements. Right now, the city must uh assess twenty percent of a project uh to do a four twenty-nine project following kind of the league's um policy manual, uh, to drop that to fifteen percent. As you know, we do a special benefit analysis, and it can be very challenging to reach that twenty percent. And so kind of doing it the right way has created some unintended consequences, and that twenty percent threshold is one of them. And so asking uh, uh, the legisla- legislator, legislators uh to consider a change. So um, there are literally hundreds of other, you know, policies um that could be advocated for, changes to law. But uh, this is typically what we've adopted. There are a few changes that I've noted. But also willing to add any that uh the mayor and the council have, have come across, if they'd like to include before we send it off to um Representative Nash and Senator Coleman. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions, council, or anything that you would like to see in our legislative priorities? Nothing from Joy. Head shake from Glenn, nothing from Lori.
No.
Christie, I will assume, you don't have any unless I hear you speak up, um.
I, I have nothing, thank you.
Oh my gosh. I was gonna say, I saw you go off mute. Um, just-
I was trying to find the button, sorry.
Just a, a few things from me, um, Kelly, if I'm remembering correctly, we had a priority in there last year, although I can't remember what it was, that dealt with fire, the fire service or public safety. Did we get what you wanted from legislature last year, or has the situation changed?
I believe there's three priorities currently that the fire service is currently working on. One is hometown heroes assistance, which um I can send you out. It really is about um firefighters that get cancer, being able to support them during that time in need. Other one would be um kind of keeping our fire safety account, um, that gives us grant monies, um, towards things that we need to purchase that they don't dip into that account, being the fact that they're probably gonna end up having a deficit.
Okay.
The other one is kind of like the hometown heroes one, it's uh cancer line, uh line of duty death survivor benefit, which would give the families thirty thousand dollars for anyone that died with a cancer-related death. Cause I'm the fire service. So I can send you this documentation, or I can send it to Brent, if you can send it out, um, if you'd like.
Yeah, um, Brent, do we have any? I realize that we probably can't present a fourteen-page document to our senator and state representatives, but is there any limit or sweet spot to the number of priorities we have? Cause those certainly seem like ones that I can get behind.
I would, I, that's all subjective, I guess. It would just be a hundred percent opinion. I would, I can't remember if it was you, or it might have been council member McKnight, where we talked about this earlier today, where um so in a perfect scenario, we have this down to a page, you know, and it, you know, we're on two pages. So all those, all those issues that Chief Trimble brought up, I, I have no doubt are worth advocating for. It's um just a matter of saying how many pages of priorities you have. And if you have, you know, three to four to five pages of priorities, do you have, do you have any priorities? And then so um ultimately, it's probably rests more on your shoulders and the councils of how many of these do you wanna go through? And do you want to say, well, those are great programs, but you know, these are our top ten or top five or top twenty? Um, I mean, the League of Cities puts out, um, you know, a manual that's probably over a hundred pages that includes the, the items. I'm sure that Chief Trimble mentions all of their advocating for them. I would, you know, I would say this document is primarily um generated to get at probably Carver-specific policies. So it's a, I would say it's all a matter of approach. But I, I would say that at, at some point, and it doesn't mean that's at this point, but at some point you are become aware of how long your document is and the attention span of our legislators to, to act on those priorities.
Um, all good points. I think there's, and maybe I don't have line of sight to it, but I think, you know, other than me bugging them about levy-related stuff, I know I certainly don't have a ton of interaction with our elected officials at the state level, so if they have to read three pages of our priorities, I'm okay with that. I don't know, does anybody else in council have any other thoughts, opinions on this? Go ahead, Laurie.
I have more just a clarification. I kind of took it as they were listed also in priority, cause for me, I know the flood one would be the first. And I do have to say, I really liked the idea of um pu- making changes to publication requirements. And that one's lower on the list. I mean, I, there's not a huge financial impact, but yet we want it on there. Am I right? Do we have these listed as well in the order of priority or vague?
Uh, I would say related to the, I intentionally put the, the items related to flood programs and the levy at the top two. The rest are um in no particular order.
Okay.
You could certainly choose to rank them in order of priority.
I agree with how they are. Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion.
Um, Joy had her hand up, I believe.
So my two cents is that I like ten, um, and this is our priorities for this year. Um, and I think that they very much represent kind of specific um needs, kind of what's happening within our city today. The things that we top of mind care about. Um, I like keeping it to ten because I agree the bandwidth of our legislators is not enormous. Um, so hearing kind of the top ten things from each city is probably about their bandwidth. Um, so I, I fully support what we have in here. I agree it should be looked at every year, right? For what's happening within Carver today and what's top of mind for us. There are probably three hundred other priorities, things that we support and we advocate for that are beyond this list. Um, beyond what Chief Trimble mentioned um as well, that hopefully the League of Cities is advocating on our behalf for.
All right, Glenn, any thoughts? No? Right. Um, you're on mute, Glenn.
He's on mute.
Still on mute, Glenn? Make this look so effortless.
Well, I will just say that I think you're with Joy. Thank you. Uh, I think uh that was well-stated, Joy, for this, for this current list and for the things of how we prioritize what we, what we do outside of this list as well. Thank you.
All right, Glenn, you look like you're off mute now.
I hope so. Um, list looks great. Um, I understand Kelly's concerns, but let's just vote what we have right now and let the league do some battling for us as well.
Um, or Brent, Kelly, maybe both, can we make sure that Kelly's, the three items that he rattled off um are on there? I would personally like to see them on there because I think it's hard to argue against any one of those three. However, I think I am in the minority um in this issue in favor of keeping things tight. The only other um issue that I wanted to address, and I think it kind of goes under the category of the perhaps the publication requirements, oh, can I finish my thought, Glenn? Um, under the, uh, under the, the topic of publication requirements, um, I would like to see an amendment made to the open meeting law so that we can continue um to meet virtually if need arises. So right now, you guys are all able to meet from your homes without having to be in a public space where somebody can get and talk to you and share their opinions in person because we're under a state of emergency at the state level, I believe it is. Um, Laurie's shaking his head, so I think I got that right. Um, otherwise, we can always do meetings remotely. However, Joy, if you are traveling and you are in China, we have to publish where you're at. You have to be in a public place where you are accessible and folks can meet with you. What I'm thinking of is, you know, if somebody has a surgery and is laid up and is not going out in public or for a variety of other reasons, I would just, I think, kind of again, with keeping with the publication requirements in thinking that it's 2021, we should be a little bit more nimble, a little bit more savvy for not only us, but the public to participate remotely. I would like to see something in the priorities included about that.
Mayor Johnson, I agree with you. I a hundred percent agree with you on that. I think we have enough examples of this happening in the last few months. And then again, like you said, if a council member has to, you've done this before, you've had to travel, it becomes this huge scenario of red tape and strings to jump. It was ridiculous. So I could be, thank you for bringing that up, Mayor Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Kristy. Go ahead, Glenn.
I was just gonna say that one way you could make a bid on one page is to also change the font size. So there you go, Vicky. That's my two cents. But I do like the idea of the, of the Zoom meetings being continued. Larry loves that.
Yeah, I also concur, obviously, just because of my own personal schedule. But, you know, this was going to be one of my questions anyway, once we get through whatever emergency order we're under. Can some pieces of that emergency order stay with us permanently and how does that happen? So maybe advocating it for, advocating for it within this set of priorities is a right way to help make sure that.
Yeah. And Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that this is something that has to change at the state level. We can't decide to continue to meet.
Okay, thanks.
So does anybody object to Brent wordsmithing my incredibly long and word-sality explanation of what I want in there and work it into our priorities?
No objection.
Kristy, I heard you voice your support. So Brent, if it's okay, if we can have that added. And then I think we're good with the list with that one addition?
If you can just approve the list with the addition of the remote meeting requirements, I'll add that.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the 2021 legislative priorities for the city of Carver with the addition of Brent to write in something about remote meeting requirements and making those be something that we can continue to employ after the state of emergency is, has ended.
All second.
All right. A good motion brought by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry. Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristy Mock.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes five zero. All right, we are now on to council communications. Joy, do you want to go first?
Um, just trying to see if there's anything that I need to communicate. You know, we did have a business council meeting last week. More of a just a business update. Good participation. It was good to meet Dr. Nick at Chiropractor Specialist. Other than that, I don't think there's any new information that came out of that meeting. I am looking forward to my first Southwest Transit meeting next week. That's it.
All right. Glenn?
Um, the planning mission meeting was canceled for this month, so I got nothing else.
All right. Lori?
I just wanted to take this forum as an opportunity to acknowledge and thank QuickTrip. It wasn't a consent agenda, but I know a lot of those things don't get highlighted. Is QuickTrip, it was Resolution 104-21 that we acknowledged and accepted and appreciate the donation of a thousand dollars to the Carver Fire Department. So thank you to them.
Well said, Lori. Thanks for pointing that out. Kristy, do you have anything?
Um, I only have one thing and it has to do with the Saudi Bottom. And the hat should be delivered tomorrow. So within either tomorrow or the next day, there'll be instructions on how to buy your Saudi Bottom fundraiser hats and then with deadlines and things like that. So we'll move along with that, even though it looks a little bit different this year. So we want to respectfully thank everyone who is ready to come out and purchase our annual Saudi Bottom stocking cap. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kristy. I talked to Jill today and I know that this means a great deal to her and Mike and their family. Let's see. For me, the Metro Cities had a legislative session preview a few weeks ago. I think Joy was in on that as well. It was a webinar. Really good, high-level overview of things. Kristy, I wish you a very speedy recovery. And then I don't have anything else, so I will yield the rest of my time to Deputy Perper if he has his two truths and a lie ready. Oh.
There, I found the button.
Okay. You're, are you game?
I'm game.
All right. Have at it.
All right. Two truths and a lie. Hockey is my favorite sport. I was born in North Dakota. And the Vikings are my favorite football team.
Oh. Oh, a lot of people are, well, maybe it's just me that's hoping that number three is the lie. Which one is it?
Number two.
Oh. Well, shoot.
Close enough.
Okay, wait. What was number two? You were born in North Dakota, so that's a lie. Where were you born?
On the border of Minnesota and North Dakota. So Washington and Brackenridge, basically. It's a river crossing.
Yeah, they know a thing or two about river levies out there.
Yep.
All right. Well, thanks for sticking it through the entire meeting with us, Deputy. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, no problem. Brent, updates and COVID-19 pandemic update?
Yep, I just, Representative Nash, that we shared his contact information. So here you can see Representative Nash along with his phone number and email should any residents, businesses, or other stakeholders in the city or surrounding areas want to reach out to Representative Nash. As it relates to COVID-19, we're planning to open the doors of City Hall tomorrow, specifically the service corner. As it stands right now, I'd be inclined to hold tight a little bit on the rentals until our next meeting does to see how things play out. But again, very open to feedback from the council should you have another perspective or direction that you wish to share.
Brent, I can't imagine that we're getting a lot of requests for rentals right now. Have we had any? Maybe that's for Vicky or?
Yeah, I defer to Vicky.
Kristy, you are correct. We have not had a lot. We've had a few, but obviously very minimal. And as you know, some groups are still allowed to meet, so they are still meeting in the church. But like you mentioned, pretty minimal at this point.
Can you remind me what the mandate is right now for meeting inside? Because we just changed over and is it twenty-five or is it something else? I don't remember.
I'm not a hundred percent up to speed on what the current language is. If the councils decided to move forward, we'd, you know, get that up and, and work to communicate that with renters, but I don't have that in front of me.
I think, I don't have a problem following state mandates with what they're at when it comes to reopening to the certain numbers that they have. I don't know how the rest of the council feels like that or feels about that, but for me, if the state mandate, I'm just throwing this out there. Let's say it says that you can have up to twenty-five people, whatever it might be. I don't have a problem reopening to whatever is mandated there.
I, I would kind of prefer to wait another couple of weeks if there's no strong demand right now. But does anybody else have any strong preference feelings?
Could we have, and then for the next meeting, I'm fine to wait another two weeks too. But can we have some of those, those answers in place so we know what we're opening up to?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And then just a couple other items. At your next work session, which would be February first, we'll have Todd Hubmer leading a discussion on his proposal from Bolton and Mink on the certified levy. So that would spend the, that's just three hundred thousand dollars in state funds along with the local match. So we'll have a good idea on the scope of that project, including the engineering, communication. They'll give the council a ask for their question, redefine certain expectations, should you have any in certain areas. One of the things that we've really spent a lot of time about that I'm looking forward to because I think as a community we've had a lot of success with is meeting with property owners adjacent to the levy one-on-one. Kind of similar to the walking tours that we do prior to a city street project. Obviously, we've had opportunities for folks to come to town halls or send emails. But at the end of the day, nothing really beats having a couple of folks come out to your place and look at the levy and hear your concerns and be able to ask questions on your time rather than waiting in line or coming to the city hall on a random Tuesday. So one of the things that you'll see within that scope is a dedicated effort to meet with everybody along the levy that would be impacted firsthand, if you will. There'll be opportunities for the community, but that's a really specific area addressed in the proposal. Also, on the February second, excuse me, first work session, Dan Lannis will be coming back with information on the Sixth Street West project. The council talked about that related to the Local Road Improvement Program grant. And so we'll have some additional information to cover with the council. My preference also would be to, if we have the time to try to get the intersection, downtown intersection stuff on the work session agenda, I will monitor that based on the amount of information that we have. We might pump that to the regular meeting and discuss as we did tonight. And then lastly, I had to, I have to, Councilmember Henry's comments related to font size make me think of trying to grind out a ten-page paper when I only have eight pages and adjusting that font size at St. John's. So old habits die hard, so I'll look at that font size code.
Never had the opposite problem. Awesome. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Henry. I'll make the second. So a motion by Councilmember Henry, a second by Mayor Johnson. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmembers. Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristy Mock.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Motion passes and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I'll have a good night.